I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present. We'd like to welcome those of you who are with us tonight here at City Hall, as well as those who may be watching at home on City 56. We're grateful for the citizens that we have in our community. We'd like to begin this evening with an invocation with Bass Vice Mayor Brent Hatch, if he would lead us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Kukavas. Please stand.
Our kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we gather this evening for the regular meeting of the Cholo City Council. We ask that thy spirit will be with us and that the decisions that we render this evening will be just and fair. We thank thee for the moisture that we've had. We ask, please, that we would be receiving more. It would abate the fire season. We ask a blessing on those service personnel that are away from their families. Watch over them and watch over their families, please, and deliver them safely back into their family's arms. We thank thee for this wonderful city in which we live and all of the wonderful attributes that we share. We ask that thou will watch over this community and bless the children that go to these schools and help them be wise in their decisions. And we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, the first item we have is a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's not scheduled on the agenda this evening may do so. Know that your time is limited to three minutes. Seeing nobody moved, a call to the public. I will close the call to the public and come to special events. Tonight, we have a presentation and update of the Cholo Main Street program. Sandy Morgan.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. I'm gonna see if I can work this thing okay on. Gave me some little lessons here. I'm Sandy Morgan, President of Cholo Main Street, and I have been affiliated with Main Street for quite a while in different positions. Cholo Main Street is a private organization, a private nonprofit organization that was established in 1995. Looks like I've already goofed up this thing. We're active in the revitalization activities that encourage investment, strengthen the business community, preserve the historic features, and improve the overall appearance of downtown Cholo. We have a ten-member board of directors composed of businesspeople, private citizens, some retired business folks, and representatives from the Cholo Chamber and the City Council are all on our board. Some of our past successes have been, we've provided input to the city on the Deuce of Club's streetscaping, the enhancement project including the lights and the trees installed on the Deuce, on the Deuce of Clubs. We've also been involved in the Cholo Elk Gateway Project, which is located at the corner where Cattlemen's sits, and the flowers for the Cooley flower boxes on the Cooley split, the Cooley Doos split, you know, we're arguing as well, and there's, we're still working on that one, a never-ending project there. In the past, we have commissioned the Cholo Creek Master Plan and Downtown Revitalization Plan with the Tohito Group. We secured and administered the CDBG block grant funding for business and facade improvements in the downtown area. We've also had several award-winning projects and programs. The Festival Marketplace Project was voted Arizona's Main Street Best Public Improvement in 1996. We were involved in the Discovering Cholo Master Plan with the Master, the Arizona Planning Association Master Plan of the Year in 2005, the Cholo Civic Center Celebrating Community, American Society Professional Architects Project in 2007. Also in 2007, Perfect Pause, which is my business, won the Arizona Street Best Small-Scale Project Award for Facade Improvement. The Cholo Creek Quarter Study with the Arizona Planning Association Master Plan of the Year was also 2007. We were pretty active in 2007. The Cholo Gateway Project, which was Arizona Main Street Program's best small-scale project, we were a finalist in 2009, and in 2016, we were voted by the Cholo Chamber as the nonprofit business of the year. So, we've got some accomplishments under our belt we're kind of proud of. We do have a lot of events, as you all know, that we're involved in yearly now, and planning some more to increase our workload a little bit. The Spring Shops in April, and the Santa and the Shops on Gingerbread Lane in November and December have become very popular. I believe it's the third year. I think, yeah, that we, this was our third year, and my theory is always it takes three years. You have to do a project for three years to really know how it's gonna, how it's gonna go, and we're very successful this year. Farmers Market and Art Walk, of course, now every Saturday from Memorial Day through September. Our ninth season is opening this year on May 26th, and I heard today through the grapevine that I think we're full. We'll have to get clarification from Diana North about that, but that was, that was rumor being spread around.
Three spaces left.
Three spaces left, and that's pretty awesome for the beginning of March. So, we're real proud of that, and she works very, very hard on that, so, kudos to Diana. A new event this year that we've started working on is the Battle of the Bands and Food Vans. That's coming in September, targeted for Labor Day weekend. So, we gotta get, get our noses to the ground on that one, and hopefully, that's gonna be a success. Again, it'll be a first-year event. And then, our Spooktacular Festival in October, of course, has been ongoing for years and keeps us busy there, too. The thing about all of these, well, we also have the Shop Small Saturday Poker Run in November, the Christmas Tree Lighting, of course, and for all of you that were there this past year, it was amazing. Just, it was phenomenal, the people that showed up, and we just had a blast. The weather was good, it was really nice. And then, we have our Downtown Merchant Holiday Decorating Contest every year, too. So, these events, not all of them are fundraising events, but the majority of them are, and that is how we fund our projects for the city that we've been able to develop and proceed on with. We try and undertake one capital project at a time that enhances the downtown area. And because there are, there's just no grant money available pretty much anymore, we are self-funded at this point with our events, so we really encourage all of participation in the events so that we can make more money and do more for downtown. The current project that we're working on, and Dave Larson is, has been really kind of heading this one through, is installing new Wayfinder signs in the downtown Cholo area with a partnership with the city. And we've, it's gonna be about a $16,000 total investment, with $10,000 from Cholo Main Street for the Wayfinder signs and posts and poles, and $6,000 from the city for the sign, the sign footing and installation. And we have a map, since I'm not doing a good job on it, you know somebody's helping me with this. We have a map to show the signs that we're actually replacing and new signs that are going to be added. And we are beginning, this week, I believe, to approach businesses and hoping that everybody down these side streets and off the main drag there will participate and, you know, put their names up on the, on the signs so that they're well-marked and people can find them. It's, we just feel it's, it's just real necessary because of the way the town's laid out that we, that we help with this. We have another, the next picture shows the old signs up there on the left, I mean, the posts, the posts and the old signs, and those are gonna be coming down. The one on the right is a picture of the new, the new signs, and then, the business names will lobby on dropdowns from there. And the guy at the bottom there, that, the signs, actually, the posts have been delivered to the city. So, that was the, the delivery of the new signs that came in, or the new posts that came in February. So, we're real anxious to get started on it, find out what businesses are gonna participate, and go from there.
Sandy, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, you, you made a comment that you hope the businesses get on there. Does it cost them to?
It'll be $50 a year for them. We are purchasing the signs the first year, and then, it's gonna be like a maintenance fee for $50 a year.
So, when somebody pays the $50, does that include you go get it made so they're all the same? They're not gonna have lettering different colors or anything like, everything's gonna be?
Everything's gonna be the same, and they're going to be that brown background with the lighter whitish writing on them, and they're, they'll be given a form to fill out. It has X amount of spaces.
Okay.
You know, so they'll, they have to fit within, you know, a format.
Right. Some of the signs, if you don't buy, like, if you, the dropdown sign is what I'm talking about. So, if you're gonna order some of those, are you gonna, do you guys have like a bunch of them so they all match, or I just worry about later, two years down the road, that the first one and the new one's gonna be, so I just, so you guys handle all that, not the customer?
Right. And we have looked into, actually, we've done some cost evaluations, like getting them done by different groups and people, and the city one. If we have them done by the city, we get, we figure we're gonna get the best bang for our buck.
It's not so much that, it's the sign. Right. The color of the sign is what I worry about later. It's gonna be out in the sun, one's gonna be put away for five years, you put a new one out there, hopefully, there's no big difference in the color of the sign itself.
Yeah, that's a good point. We can address it. We have a Cholo Main Street meeting Thursday night, and we can address that with Dave and be sure that, yeah, that's, that's on target, because as we know, unfortunately, businesses come and go.
Sure.
So, that, that'll be changing. And I guess where we're at right now, and a topic of our meeting, our next Cholo Main Street meeting, is going to be our next project. We've been, I've been digging into the past and looking at the Tohito plans that were made years ago and kind of get some direction from those, and we're entertaining ideas, we're inviting ideas and asking the citizens of Cholo and council and anyone who has any, any thoughts or ideas to get ahold of one of us, and Steve North, or Diana, or myself, or anybody on the, on Main Street Board. Rob Turnwald's here, too, and give us some ideas, because we're kind of on a roll right now, and we're looking, we're looking for a new project that's suitable for the downtown area.
Any other questions or comments of council? Sure.
One more, just, I'm more curious than anything. You said the board. Who, did you know who's all on, the ten that are on the board? So, we could kind of, can you name them? That's what I meant.
Let's see who I'm gonna forget. Okay.
Come on, Diana.
Myself, Rob, Daris Gibbons, Dave Larson, Michelle Monroe, Kim Frenell, Councilman Alsop, Adrian Acosta, who?
Eric.
Oh, Eric Nitzel.
Eric Nitzel and Eric Thorpe.
And Eric Thorpe.
Thank you.
That's it, right?
And, well, we're getting ready to bring on Julia Eden.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we're all ears.
For what you do for the community, we appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item we have is the consent calendar. Any items that need to be polled or reviewed? Not a, the items we have is Item A, consideration of denim and non-commercial ground lease, assigning a lease from JR Holding Properties, JR Property Holdings to Leanne Tuado and Ken Cahill, also the minutes of February 20, 2018. Look for a motion. Motion by Councilwoman Kukavas, seconded by Councilmember Alsop. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Let's see that pass seven to zero. Thank you. First item, a new business that we have here is consideration of the Fourth Amended and Restated Membership Agreement with Municipal, Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, Mr. Justin Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, AMRRP, has held the city's property and casualty policy insurance since 1987. Currently, there are 91 Arizona cities and towns, and of those, 76 are members of the AMRRP. AMRRP has been working to revise the membership agreement, which is outdated, and recently approached the city to update Cholo's AMRRP membership agreement. The revisions include updating general housekeeping language to make, to match current AMRRP coverage agreements, changing the name of AMRRP's Loss Control Program to Risk Management Program to modernize the name and better reflect the goals of AMRRP. Appendix C has been revised to include the new Risk Management Program Agreement and now has links to best practices. It also includes electronic notices in the new agreement to help keep up with technological improvements and changes, adding a provision that members who choose to leave AMRRP will now have a three-year waiting period should they decide to return. Many other pools in the country have chosen to do this to protect existing members from funding claims for those who chose to leave for a one-time premium reduction from competitors as rates will rise the following year, and adding required language specific to ARS-35-393, which has to do with parties engaged in boycotting Israel. And staff's available for questions. I can say AMRRP one more time if you want.
State Legislature. You want me to explain it?
Well, I don't understand it.
The State Legislature, about a year or two ago, put in a provision that you have to have in every agreement, the language that says that we can't engage in any boycott of Israel.
Okay.
You can't engage in what?
Cannot engage with any business that boycotts Israel.
I still don't, what was the last word? Boycotts what?
Israel, the country, Israel.
Israel?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the State Legislature for you, so.
Okay, now I feel dumber than I was when I got here.
All right.
Wow.
Any questions or comments on this? Just interesting their language on the three-year, you know, leave, I guess it's gonna force their competition if they have it to, you know, really locks you guys in almost. The other side is, you know, what protects you of their rates not going up, up, and, you know, then you have the, the same dilemma. If you were to leave, you know, somebody, you know, is gonna have to take you on for at least three years. It's kind of, it's, it works both ways. I can see where it can sometimes hurt us, but it can sometimes protect us, too. Any discussion? Councilwoman Kukavas?
I would just like to state that this has been a really good program for the city of Cholo for many, many years, and I appreciate staff's work on that in, in our risk management program to keep our employees safe and our citizens safe. I'd also like to move to approve the Fourth Amendment and Restated Membership Agreement with Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool and authorize the mayor to sign said agreement.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Leach. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Let's see that pass seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Item 8B, consideration of Resolution R2018-08, supporting Arizona House Current Memorial, 2005. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, and good evening. In July 2013, the Federal Aviation Administration imposed a final rule that increased qualification requirements for first officers of Part 121 air carriers to 1,500 total flight hours as a pilot. This rule addressed a congressional mandate in the Airline Safety and Federal Aviation Administration Extension Act of 2010, which ensures that both pilot and copilot receive airline transport pilot certification. The result of this rule is that many pilots cannot meet requirements, thus resulting in a shortage of pilots, especially for essential air service EAS communities like Cholo. The city of Prescott is requesting the city of Cholo support, to support HCM 2005 and Arizona House Concurrent Memorial, to provide specific waivers for the 1,500-hour flight rule for airlines operating under EAS. Since the 1,500-hour flight rule was put into effect, airlines serving EAS communities often have found it difficult to fill pilot positions. The requirement to obtain 1,500 flight training hours prevents many would-be pilots from entering the field because of the steep time commitments and financial costs. Attached is the, the resolution number R2018-08, the letter that we received from the city of Prescott and HCM 2005, Arizona House Concurrent Memorial. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other discussion? This is kind of similar to what happened when Great Lakes a few years ago was unable to, you know, continue the services because of the pilot shortage, and, you know, hopefully, if this, these hours were reduced, then we wouldn't have quite the challenges with pilots that qualified.
That's right.
What do they want to reduce them to?
Unsure right now. One thought, it has to reduce them to 135 requirements, which allows a first officer to be hired at 500 flight hours, and so, that's probably what they would push for. And that's actually what Boutique Air flies under, is 135, although they, they do meet, are required to meet several 121 rules because they, they service into, to Phoenix, into the terminal there, but.
In your personal opinion, will that put any risk that we don't have now on our airlines or on our pilots or on us flying?
Safety, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't believe so. The, this rule, this mandate came after an accident that occurred in 2009, where the copilot and pilot had between 3,000 and 5,000 flight hours each, and really was caused by their inability to recover from icing, and they put themselves into a stall.
It says, you know, the prior requirement was 250 hours, so it went from 250 to 1,500, and more hours flying wasn't the problem as much as familiar, familiar, that's a hard word for me, familiarity with the airplane itself and not being, you know, familiar with it, so that was kind of the challenges they had. So, Prescott, you know, sent this letter to us and just asked us if we would support their effort, and right now, Great Lakes is servicing Prescott area, and they continue to service Prescott and, and Page and a few other communities around. Not that it's going to open the door further for a different airline, but it just, as a requirement going forward, would help if we ever had, you know, a situation of pilots again.
So, would they still maintain a captain-copilot situation where there's two?
Yes.
Right?
Boutique isn't required to, but they do for safety reasons, and that there may be an insurance reason why they're, they do as well.
Any other comments? Look for a motion? I'll make a motion. I move to approve Resolution R2018-08, supporting Arizona House Concurrent Memorial, 2005, requesting the U.S. Congress allow the U.S. Department of Transportation to provide additional essential air service-specific waivers for the 1,500 flight hour training requirements for commercial pilots. Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Did you have a question, Councilmember Kelly?
I think we were both trying to shed a motion.
Okay, okay. Thank you there. All right. See no other comments? A call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Let's see that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item then we have is a summary of current events. I look to councilmembers, any current events they'd like to cover at this time. Councilmember Alsop.
Thank you, Mayor. Just went to, went to a chamber function at the Elks Lodge. It was a great time where Mr. North had, and I had to do a flip-off on a coin to find out who was gonna go up there and hit a buzzer. Mr. North won and ended up with the championship belt, so city is well underway for all the techniques that we can get our championship belt, so we did a great job. Also, just one thing about Main Street and the different things that we do, I've been proud and honored to be on there with the mayor putting me onto the Main Street, like the different functions that she said we've always done, you know, with the Farmers Market and Art Walk that's going on the ninth year. That is unbelievable that we're already sold out almost with March coming on, so looking for a big, big time and a big crowd of people this year, and it's just, it's nice to see Saturdays where that is all filled up and there's a lot of things going on, so it's been an honor to work for them. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Leach?
Just another reminder that our 65th anniversary in the city of Cholo is, and our sixth annual barbecue throwdown is happening May 5th from 11:00 to 4:00. It's free to the public. We, I believe, to date, we have probably 16 or 17 teams signed up, but we'll have, we're expecting well over 50 to 60 teams from all over the country this year, so come on out. Hopefully, we'll get all four seasons again like we did last year, so it'll be cool. Thank you.
Any other comments or council reports? Just wanna touch base a little bit here. Today, we had a opportunity of contacting Boutique Air. One of the situations that we have going on with Boutique Air is the month of January and February, they have had some cancellations and some delays of flights. Has been a concern to us, why that it's happening. One of the reasons are the, the storms that we've had this winter have somehow been a little more severe, and the particular Pilatus airplane, there's something to do with the propeller, the way that it's designed of de-icing, and so, it's had, some of those have had to have repairs, and just de-icing the propeller has caused some alarm and concern, so it has caused some delays. Also, there's been a little bit of shortage of some mechanics that they have or the positioning of those mechanics. We talked to a CEO today from Boutique Air. They have acquired one new plane in their route, and they have, are looking at purchasing two more planes within a couple of weeks. They've found them, they've located them, and they're looking at consummating those purchases, so adding three more planes to their fleet, which will help alleviate that problem. But it is going to be a little bit of concern and things working through that, so we just appreciate what they're doing to try to resolve it, as well as the continuum patronage that we have from our citizens, that they will just be supportive. Boutique has been very good at contacting people and notifying if there is going to be a delay or if a flight has been canceled, but we don't like to see any of them hardly at all. So, hopefully, they'll get it back shortly here, and as warmer weather comes, that's gonna help solve the problem, too. So, is any councilmembers or anybody have any more questions or concerns they'd like us to address on that? Okay. Thank you. For the time, the city manager for his report.
Couple items, Mayor. The recreation staff's accepting the registration for Friday Kids Night Out, 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. It's for kids 5 to 11 years old. They enjoy dinner, games, and a movie at the teen center. They're also accepting registration for co-ed summer softball, ages 15 and older, and as Councilman Leach has mentioned, they're accepting applications or registrations for the barbecue throwdown, which will be on May 5th. Spring break for Cholo Schools is this next week, and both the Recreation Department and the library have planned events. The Recreation Department's offering spring playdays next Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to noon. It's $35 for four days, or $10 a day for the boys and girls, 5 to 11 years old. The classes will be held at the teen center, and if you want more information on that, 532-4140. The library staff's also holding two events. They're teen events, ages 13 to 18, next week. They'll be on Wednesday, March 14th, 2:00 to 3:30, and Crack the Code Event, and then the second event will be the Second Humans vs. Zombies Experience on March 15th from 6:15 to 8:00 p.m. 6:15 to 8:00 p.m. And finally, we, we want to announce that we had planned for a, our Sholo Martin Luther King Day of Service on May 12th. We have some scheduling conflicts, so we're gonna move the, that service day to April 28th, and in the future, we want to try to do it the last Saturday of April every year. So, if you're planning on participating in that, it'll be on April 28th this year.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, this time, we have executive session that we need to go to where we will basically have an evaluation of the city manager, and then we also have the executive session minutes of February 20th to discuss. I need a motion to move into executive session.
So, sir.
By Councilmember Leach, seconded by Councilmember Alsop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See that passed seven to zero. This time, we'll move, move into executive session. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it.